Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Ruth, if you may lead us.
Please stand if you're able and place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, we're going to do roll call. Ms. Backus.
Trustee Ayesha Kennerly.
Present.
Chair Jamie Merchant.
Present.
Trustee Shirley Tyler Hayes.
Present.
Trustee Sharice Leonard. And trustee Ruth Heineman.
Present.
Next, we're only able to approve the board meeting minutes for the month of February. So do we have a motion to approve the February 27th board meeting minutes?
I make a motion to approve the February 27th board meeting.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion was made by Ayesha. A second was made by Ruth. Ms. Backus, can you do a roll call?
Vice Chair Ayesha Kennerly.
Approve.
Chair Jamie Merchant.
Approve.
Trustee Shirley Tyler Hayes.
Approve.
And trustee Ruth Heineman.
Approved.
Next, we have the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered routine business matters. Status reports, documents covering previous library, board of trustee items. Items listed on the consent calendar may be elected in one motion. Is there anybody that would like to pull anything on the consent calendar?
Nope.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
A second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, I guess we need to do a roll call. Ms. Backus.
Vice Chair Ayesha Kennerly.
Approve.
Chair Jamie Merchant.
Approve.
Trustee Shirley Tyler Hayes.
Approve.
And trustee Ruth Heineman.
Approved.
All right, moving on. Communication from the public. Do we have any communication?
We do not have any communications from the public.
Youth update. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Gruner Gore from the Mayor's Youth Council. The Mayor's Youth Council offers students the opportunity to serve their community, gain a wealth of experience in the local government, and add their voice to discussions that will shape the future of our city. At our last Mayor's Youth Council meeting, we had a meeting with the fire chief, Brian Young, at the Fire Department headquarters. He gave us an overview of what the Fire Department does for our community, especially not just fighting fires. Their average response time to an emergency situation in our city is about six minutes. He also discussed their CPR training program, their blood drives they put on to save lives, fire exploration program, the Pulse Point Respond app alerts, CPR-trained citizens of cardiac arrest in their vicinity so that they may administer aid. They have seven fire stations in our city. Please sign up for emergency notifications at our city's website at corona.ca.gov or visit their social media sites. Our next meeting is Tuesday, April 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have your CPR certification?
I do not. I have taken a course in my class to do so, but I haven't gotten the certification yet.
Maybe we can arrange for them to put on a class for you guys.
Yes, that would be a great idea.
Everybody should learn it. Thank you so much, that was a great update. Does anybody else have any questions?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving along to Danielle, the library report.
All right, good evening, Madam Chair, trustees, and Director Finch. I just want to start off with, I always like to highlight a service that I think gets underused. So, one of our e-resources is Canopy. It's a streaming service that we offer, and it has access to more than 30,000 documentaries, movies, and educational videos. The titles are always available, there are no holds or waiting lists. And these videos come from thousands of producers such as PBS and Great Courses. Users are limited to 10 items a month, and if the monthly quota is reached, users may have to wait for the next month to check more out. We also have access to Canopy Kids. That is, they are videos and other documentaries that encourage social and emotional development and promotes respect for community, diversity, and inspires creativity. On March 4th, the library went to Lincoln Elementary to give a presentation about the library resources. The students learned more about our library programs focused on our reading incentives and homework help. The younger classes also danced along to a library-themed storytime. So, all 780 students went home with a copy of our calendar and the National Library Week flyer. And a very special thank you to the amazing Martin for continuing to represent our library to our schools and our community. So here are some upcoming events for our library. We have an open mic night this Thursday at 6:00 in the Francis Aldama Martinez Room. Performance may be acoustic, spoken word, a cappella, poetry, freestyle, or performance art. They can be on any subject and in any style, but it needs to be appropriate for a broad audience. And it is open to high school ages, ages high school, and to adults. Next, we have the Tortured Library Poetry Department Party, which is open for 6th to 8th graders on April 24th, starting at 2:00 p.m. It is inspired by Taylor Swift's new album, if you haven't realized that now. But, the event will have snacks and poetry, and of course, friendship bracelets. Our staff is offering a One Shot Dungeons &amp; Dragons session on April 25th, starting at 5:30. And the ages are for high school and adult. All you need is yourself, and character sheets and die are going to be provided. And lastly, we have DIA, which is Diversity in Action, on April 27th. The DIA celebration emphasizes the importance of literacy for children of all linguistic and cultural backgrounds. And our tech team are the ones who spearhead this event, and it is supported by the Friends of the Library and the California State Library. We have an entire week of fun activities for our National Library Week. This year, it is race slash car themed, and we've tried to work that theme throughout the week. First, we have our Sensory Station and Resource Fair that is starting off this week. It will start at 10:00 a.m., and it will have Library and Recreation, Leaps and Bounds, CNUSD Parent Center, the Center for Autism and Related Disorders, and the CNUSD Community Advisory Committee, A+ Home Care. And we were going to have Inland Regional Center, but they canceled Ted Day. So unfortunately, they won't be there, but we will have information that they are providing for us to hand out. We also have a fun Corona's Racing History event presented by the Corona Heritage Park and Museum. It is a local history talk on Corona's 1913, 1914, and 1916 Grand Boulevard Road races. And light refreshments will be provided at that time. And we also have pit stops throughout the library, which are informal activities. And I did want to note that the official date for National Library Week is the 7th through the 13th, but we changed it so that it coincided with CNUSD's spring break. So the library is currently putting together our annual report, and it will include some achievements from that prior year as well, because there were some things that we were really proud of and we wanted the community to know. So, so far, we have information about our events and resources, data, grants, fundraisers, budgets, our Friends of the Library and partnerships, but we also wanted to ask the trustees to see if they would like to either write a letter or a group letter and provide a photo, or we can use the photos that you already have. But also, if you have any ideas on content, please let us know so that we can also include that in the annual report. So this is our strategic plan update. So far, we are, the first data gathering phase has been completed, and now we're moving into Phase 2, which consists of the survey and focus groups. Our communications and IT departments are putting together the survey and the website, as well as creating a video for the survey. The survey will go live, I believe, next week. And we really hope that the trustees will help us get that word out. The survey will be up for a little over a month so that we can try to give people as much opportunity as possible to write in and give us their answers. Next, our focus groups have been set for May 7th through the 8th, and invitations were sent to your email. We've not only invited the trustees, but also educational leaders in the local area, staff, public, and city hall leaders. At present, I have the trustees' meeting on May 8th, but let me know if that works for you or not. And I'm finalizing the schedule this week. So, as soon as you can, just let me know. And this is just a very special thank you slide to our friends. These are our new study carols in the library. And we haven't had new study carols since 1994. So basically, when the library opened, that was when we got the previous study carols. And so, these carols were a part of the Friends' commitment to the library for the fiscal year 2324. And the study carols have a bookshelf, a light, power, and a wider study space. And we've seen them being used pretty frequently ever since they came in. So these are the February top titles for fiction. Of course, Pokemon Adventures: Winds Again at 71 checkouts. We also have Demon Slayer at a very, very far second at 31. And these are our nonfiction top titles, which the very top title is our Primary Phonics checkout. But then we also have What My Plant Is Telling Me with 11 checkouts following that. And then for our ebooks, It Starts With Us had a high checkout of eight, and then followed by, very closely, by High Heat by Lee Childs. This is our April calendar of events. Most of the stuff I've already discussed, but I also did want to note that we have an adaptive story hour on April 8th and 22nd. And also, some of our offerings are going to be closed in early April because that's when spring break is occurring. So these are our upcoming items for the library on March 28th, which is this Thursday, the Heritage Room Justification at the Spring Financial Workshop. I'm going to be giving a presentation to council about asking for additional staffing for the Heritage Room. And then also, that would mean additional hours as well. On April 6th, we have our ESL grant going to council. The library received approval for our ESL grant for the next two years. It's over $180,000 from the California State Library, which we are excited about. And then the financial approval requires council vote. Next, we have our trustees' meeting on the 23rd. We will have a presentation specifically on National Library Week. And then we will have the Friends of the Library coming again and giving their report. And then, of course, May 7th through the 8th, we have our strategic plan focus groups. And Debbie Joy will be on site for those times. And then, last but not least, the California Library Association Conference. The theme is Balancing Act Self-Care and Shelf Care. Yes. It will be October 17th through the 19th in Pasadena, California. And the conference is going to be filled with some dynamic speakers, engaging programs, and valuable networking opportunities. Actually, thank you to Director Finch. The Community Services Department will be able to apply a stipend to your registration fees starting in fiscal year 2425. So if you are interested in attending, please let me know or Director Finch know, and we can get you registered. It's not open yet, but it should be in May. So if we can have a list of your names, we can get that started. Any questions?
Danielle, I do have one question about the strategic plan update. You said ours is for May 8th.
Yes.
Do you have the ours?
Currently, I have it for 1:30, but I just wanted to make sure that was okay with everyone. If that's okay, then yeah, it'll probably, it'll more than likely be at 1:30.
And to what?
1:30 to 2:50.
Okay.
Yes, we're, I think we're offering 75 to 80 minutes for those sessions.
You'll send us an email?
Yes. Yeah, I'm finalizing the schedule this week. So, once that happens, I'm sending it all out.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I have a couple more questions.
Sure.
On Canopy, are the movies current or non-current?
That's a great question. I believe they're pretty current.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, they usually try to upload some pretty current ones.
Okay. And then on the strategic plan, strategic plan update, you said there's going to be a survey on the website. Can you send us something to post on our Facebook pages so that we can blast it out to our...
Yes, so Communications is finishing up their video, and they have one more, one more shoot, actually, two more shoots, and then they're going to edit the video and put it together. And then, as soon as I have all of that information, I'm going to send you the day and the time for your focus group, as well as the website for your, for the survey.
Oh, okay, great. Then I'm looking forward to the conference.
Excellent. I will put you down.
Do you want us to send you an email or send it to Donna?
Or, yeah. Either or.
Either or. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple questions. I thought that was wonderful that they went out to Lincoln School. Do they go to all the elementary schools?
So, it's by request. We have kind of an online form that we're trialing with a lot of the school librarians at first. And then we're hoping to make the online form public once we get a few more guidelines set up. But it's by request. So we have gone to quite a few elementary schools in the area. Some of them understand that it may be more difficult for their students to make it here. And so, we talk about whether a library tour is possible for them or a library visit, you know, from our staff and a presentation. And it just so happened that that day coincided with the kickoff for the Read-A-Thon fundraiser. So that's one of the reasons why we went there, was they wanted us there for their fundraiser. And that was kind of the first event to kick that off.
Okay, thank you. I have another question, and it's about the Heritage Room. And you have probably already spoken about it in the past, but since I'm relatively new. The exhibits in the Heritage Room, will they be rotating exhibits? Will all of it or part will be, you know, there all the time with new exhibits coming in? What is the plan?
Yes, so we will have a rotating exhibit schedule with the items that we currently have in the Heritage Room. So there will be nothing permanent up there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for being so mindful and having a library week with the spring break. I think that that's great for families because I know that they sometimes are wondering, "What are we going to do to keep our kiddos busy?" I did have a couple questions. So the Corona Racing History, is that for adults or is that kid base?
It's for all ages.
Okay. It will capture the kids attend, like...
It should.
That's the plan.
I believe the Corona Heritage Museum does a really good job of being able to make it accessible to all ages.
And then, can you explain about the Mario Kart tournament? That sounds fun.
Martin, do you want to take that again?
Yeah, so that one does have a specific age. I think it's 14 and up, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. But we're going to have 32 competitors. So they show up, and we're going to have them write their name on the bracket there that day. And we are going to have different spaces, like booths kind of throughout the room, where if they're not participating in the competitive part of the tournament, they can still have fun that's sort of Mario Kart themed. And again, we wanted to follow the theme of Ready, Set, Library, and so that's why we chose Mario Kart. But yeah, it is going to be an actual competitive tournament with prizes. And the coolest thing is that we 3D-printed our own medals to give out to the winners. So we have a first, second, and third place medal that they get that is Mario Kart themed, that we printed at the library, and then kind of decorated it and painted it. So they'll be winning that along with other prizes during the tournament.
Oh, I love it. Using the maker's space to come up with the gifts, that's great. And then also, I cannot thank you enough for having the Sensory Station Resource Fair. I'm so near and dear to my heart, and I'm really looking forward to it. And I feel like it's just getting us that one step closer to reaching out to that community. So thank you so much. And I would like to go to the October.
And Danielle, if I could just say, I'd like to go to the conference too in October.
All right, if there's no other questions, we will move on. So our next one is our library, the library report again, the second report? We had the March report.
Yes, so we have the literacy report. Our librarian, Jamie.
Oh, the literacy, okay.
Yeah, Heller is here to give that report.
Perfect.
Hi, everyone, I'm Jamie.
Hello.
Nice to meet all of you. I'm going to be talking about adult and family literacy that we've got going on. All right, I'm going to start with adult literacy. Our adult literacy program offers free tutoring for one-on-one for English and non-English speaking adults to improve their reading and writing, speaking and listening skills. The goal is to help students succeed in whatever their life goals may be. This is totally funded by the California State Library. We currently have two grants going. Our adult grant is $25,154. And then we did get the ESL grant, and that is for two years. The first year is $81,000, and the next year, I believe, is $91,000. All right, so we have a whole bunch of different adult classes to offer. We have ESL on Mondays and Wednesdays from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We have Citizen Preparation on Mondays from 3:00 to 6:00. We have Computer Basics Thursdays at 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We have ESL classes from Tuesdays and Thursdays from 3:30 to 6:30 p.m. Computer Basics again on Fridays from 1:00 to 3:00. And we're hoping to offer short courses over the summer for six to eight weeks. Also, we offer, yeah, we also offer scholarships for our different grants and different things. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. We also offer Career Online High School. This is not a GED, this is an actual high school diploma. Currently, as of this year, we've had 28 adult learners, and 68% of them have graduated with their high school diploma. We even have currently a gentleman that is 72 years old, and he is working on getting his high school diploma.
All right.
It's like, go, go.
Yes, exactly, that's what I was going to say. It's great.
Yeah. I just wanted to show you some stats really quickly. Our adult literacy tutoring program, we currently have about 30 students. We have 23 instructors and tutors. Those are the one-on-one tutoring that we offer. And they usually work, the students are for four to five hours per month. We also have adult classes that offer the citizenship, the computer classes, and all different things that we offer. We currently have 45 students, five different instructors. And we partner with Corona Norco Unified School District for the instructors to come to our library. And they usually do about 100 hours per month. We also have Career Online High School. Currently, right now, we have five students and three different instructors, and they usually work about 40 hours a month. Also, we have a bunch of different places where they can learn. We have the Computer Learning Center that we call the CLC. We also offer study rooms and the Cow's Lab, which is specifically for learners and their tutors. We offer a lot of different materials and equipment to help them learn. We have CD players, tablets that they can check out and take home. We also offer Chromebooks for in-house for up to three hours that they can use in the library. And we have a whole bunch of different curriculums and different materials to help our tutors and our learners. And now, I wanted to talk about family literacy. And family literacy, we also have a grant from the California State Library. This year, we have, it is $40,258. So we have a bunch of different little partnerships. In February, we had a combined storytime for Dental Hygiene Month. We partnered with Children's Dental Fun Zone. We had over 130 people show up to this storytime. We did teeth-themed books and rhymes, and every child got a free dental kit. Some of the other storytimes that we offer that are special, we do Star Wars reads, and we always have a big Halloween storytime in October. I wanted to point out Play Cafe, which is something that we offer fall and winter sessions. I wanted to point out Play Cafe, which is something that we offer fall and winter sessions. There are six-week programs for caregivers of children zero to five. We offer different storytimes, snacks, and coffee for the caregivers. We give them take-home literacy kits. They also get newsletters in English and Spanish. We also give them free books so that they could build their home libraries. And we, this last one, we had a partnership with Early Intervention Village. So if any of our caregivers wanted to discuss different resources that are available to their children, yeah. These is, this is three of our new early literacy kits that we offer. There's music, sensory touch, and different outdoors. Also, this year, we started with a New Year, New Goals party, and this was just for our family literacy learners and tutors so that they could meet together. Usually, it's, we have one-on-one tutoring, but we wanted to throw them a little party so that they could get to know each other and form a different, like, a community. We also had literacy kits that we gave to the learners, like, depending on what their Also, the different things that we have coming up, we have, actually, this Saturday, we're doing a Literacy Takes You Places event, and that is for learners and their families. We're going to be doing three different activities. We're going to have a nonfiction text scavenger hunt where we have travel books, and they have to find different aspects in the travel books. We also have a Kahoot trivia game that they'll be playing based on maps and different things. And we are also going to have a presentation about how to write a postcard, and we're going to have them write just a few sentences, so it's nothing overwhelming, and it's going to be a lot of fun. Is there any questions?
I do have a question about the Career Online High School.
Yes.
Is that associated with the school district adult ed?
We do. We have a partnership with the school district adult ed. We have the teachers come and offer the classes at our library.
Okay. And just congratulations on all the various activities and outreach that you do. It looks like you're really providing for almost everyone in the community in one way or another.
Thank you. We have such a good team.
Thank you. The adult literacy for the high school, is this for kids who maybe dropped out of high school early and then decided they needed a high school diploma?
Yes, it is for 18 and up. That is a requirement, and they also have to be a resident of Corona. They have to be a city resident. And we do offer the scholarships based on the money that we have from the grants to help them get their diplomas. They do have two chances. If for some reason life happens, they do have a second chance to try to get their diploma from us for free.
Great.
Looks like you've done a lot here, like Ruth said, and that you cater to all the different age groups. I had a question about the literacy kits.
Yes.
Does each kid get to select which one they want? Like, if they wanted the music one, and then maybe the next month or two, they could come back and get the outdoors one? Or how does that work?
Yes, the different kits are there that they, they're there to offer for checkout, so they can come in and grab any one that they would want, then bring it back, and they can pick another one.
Okay.
We have them in the children's room currently, and these are our three new ones.
That's great. Wish I was a kid again. We didn't have all that when I was a little.
Grandbabies, got to get you some grandbabies so you can check those out. For the adult literacy, for the adult ed program with the partnership with Corona Norco Senior SD, I did, I spoke, I believe it was either the December or January meeting, the board, Senior SD Board approved an extension in the agreement. So I went and advocated and said that it is a great agreement and had them do it. So it's been officially approved now. So I love the collaboration between the school district and the city. I think it's fantastic. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
No.
Next, we're moving on to Martin, Vets Connect.
All right, that is me. All right, welcome, everyone. And I do have to start off with some bittersweet news. I discovered earlier this month, last week actually, Ellie Griffiths, who was one of our lead volunteers for the Vet Connect program, she unfortunately will be, I guess, resigning her position as our lead volunteer. Her and her husband are going to be enjoying a very well-deserved retirement, moving to a different state. So throughout this month, we are currently in the process of trying to figure out the transition. But that doesn't mean that I can't share all of the wonderful things that she and the rest of our team have done within this past year. So here we go. So for those that may either be unaware of Vets Connect or just not familiar enough with it, it was a program that we started in April of 2019. At the time, it was a grant-funded program, and the focus was to have open office hours and special events to help connect veterans to their community, either by allowing them to more easily access the resources or benefits. And it was a state-funded initiative to make sure that veterans were accessing their full benefit potential as opposed to just, you know, one thing or another related to jobs, healthcare, owning a home, or whatever it may be. So really, we're trying to make sure that veterans know that they can access a wealth of resources that they've earned. So right now, we have our current weekly office hours on Tuesdays and Wednesdays from 10:00 to 1:00. And we've had a pretty heavy presence at local events, thanks in part to our wonderful team, either city events or other local veteran-adjacent organizations, such as Amber Waves of Grain. And occasionally, we will have events hosted at the Corona Public Library. We are trying to plan kind of an annual calendar where we can have a quarterly event for veterans to just come in and be more, I would say, a bit social. We really try, are trying to focus on the connect portion of the Veterans Connect program. The benefits and the paperwork and everything is important, but we really want them to feel like the community's there for them. And if we can bring them together and do that at the library, that is ultimately the goal of the program, and we think that that would lead to more successful engagement in the future. So there's the current team, or at least most of it, accepting a donation from the Corona Elks Lodge at a city council meeting last year. So there you see Ms. Ellie in the middle, Tammy, David, and not seen or not pictured there are Sue, and of course, our book club lead, her name is Sally. So again, thank you to all of them, and what a wonderful, wonderful year it has been. The PACT Act, which I mentioned at council meeting, really kind of kicked us in a high gear. We did have a few veterans who came in and had a lot of questions related to what that meant for them. For those that may not know, the PACT Act extended a lot of benefits to cover veterans that were either exposed to burn pits or other toxic substances as part of their service, which included a lot of Vietnam service members. And so we do have a heavy presence of those here in our community. And of course, they had a lot of questions when that was first passed. And we were able to help a few of our veterans and their families with accessing those extended benefits for them. We did have questions about housing, healthcare, some memorial services and burials that went on throughout this past year. And of course, we had our social events. The Flag Day celebration was something new that we had tried. We just wanted to have a nice, fun event during the summer. We brought in local veteran groups. We had a cake and some other light refreshments that were funded by those donations that we've received. So thank you once again, the groups that have donated to us. And it was just a fun time. It was nice. We had a proper, traditional flag-folding ceremony, and for each fold of the, for every, I think it's 13 folds in the flag, there is a purpose and there is a meaning behind each fold. And so they explained it to the public and the service members that were there in attendance, and it was a fun time. We did have our annual Veteran Resource Fair. This year, we called it a symposium because we changed up the format a little bit, which I think was a bit successful. We wanted it to feel less like a open concept and more purposeful and more meaningful with what kind of information we were passing along to them. So it was more of a kind of lecture and question-and-answer-based event. And then we served a hot meal courtesy of Eduardo's Mexican Restaurant, which is a local business here. And that was, again, paid for by donations that we've received. Amber Waves of Grain, that wasn't a program that we put on as a Veterans Connect at the Library group, but it was one of the biggest veteran-adjacent programs here in the community. And of course, Veterans Connect was there, as well as the City of Corona, just advertising our resources and the benefits that we can grant them and their families. So looking forward to the next year. I mentioned those, hopefully, quarterly events that we can get planned. We want to start with some kind of veterans picnic or barbecue, starting in May. We want this to have a bit of a music-themed focus. And so we just think that a nice, again, summer event to get the veterans together, and then, once we have them together, we can tell them all about what the library has to offer them, either through the Veterans Connect program or just as a library in general. We want to have some sort of anniversary event to coincide with the Flag Day event, likely around June, same as last year. And then again, we are looking forward to make that, we are bringing back that now annual resource fair in October, very likely on the first week. Something new that we are planning as well is a New Year's event, and that would likely be either late December or early January. And again, we really want to focus on that whole connect part of the program. We've noticed that at the events that we've hosted so far, a lot of the more meaningful interaction comes with the veterans sharing their stories to each other, to their families, to, you know, grandkids, to us as staff members. So we really value that. We want to keep that going, and we want to continue that momentum into leading them into searching for, you know, extended benefits or whatever they may need help with. So the Veterans Connect Book Club is a program that runs kind of adjacent to our Vets Connect at the Library office hours. So this meets on the first and third Wednesday of each month. Ms. Sally Gabara is the one that leads that for us. On screen, you see pictured a handful of titles that they've read within the past year, many of them current titles. And so, again, we are able to pay for those materials for them so that they don't have to worry about going out and finding the book. We do provide that for them. They meet the first and third Wednesday of each month from 10:30 to 12:00 in the corner room. So that would be downstairs in the library. And they do provide coffee and donuts. So that is one of the big selling points. Of course, you know, other than the social engagement and the interaction, and some wonderful literature as well. So it's a nice, fun program. Many of them, many of the books that they choose are, you know, sometimes war-related, so many of them do get to relate to the books in other ways that, you know, your average reader may not. And then they bond with each other based on, you know, their stories or their experiences. So it's a way for them to engage with one another in ways that they might not have engaged with before. And of course, a huge thank you to everyone who has either partnered with us, donated to our cause, or just been a wonderful helping hand in the community. I do want to give an extra special shout-out to Ms. Mary Ann Sherman. I know Ellie and her work pretty closely on certain things through Ellie and Johnny, her husband's group, Veterans Honoring Veterans. And so on screen, you see a few partners who we've invited to programs or who have invited us to their programs. And of course, there's countless other individuals who have just come out, shared the support, come just to meet up with our veterans or our staff and our volunteers. So we're very grateful for our community, and I'm hoping that our veterans feel grateful for their community as well, and knowing that they're there for them. So that is all that I have. The work continues on, and I look forward to another exciting year. But does anybody have any questions?
No questions, but you did an awesome job.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Awesome. Thank you very much, and we're going to miss Ellie. I have a close connection with the vets. I'm married to a Vietnam veteran, and so I'm very closely connected to the group, but Ellie's going to be missed. And thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your presentation. And you're young, but you just look like you have a real passion to help the veterans and bring them together, so thank you.
Thank you.
I think that whoever the next volunteer we get, because now we've lost Ellie out of state and Carrie out of state, we need to have some kind of a commitment to stay in Corona. I would, I don't know when she's leaving, but would we be able to recognize her at the next meeting?
Ooh, that, we can try to set that up. I did not get an official timeframe as to when her official move would be. I think it depends on the house situation, but I can certainly pass that along to her and try and get her out here.
Yeah, I think that would be great. I think that we'd really like to recognize her and Johnny too, for all the work that they've done for our veterans and within our community. It's amazing, amazing program. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, on to trustee communications. Do you have anything?
Yes, what I thought was really interesting, and so whoever does it, they did a good job for me. The statistical data that we looked at, I liked that I saw a lot of progress within one year when it compared how many people had used a service at the library and how many more had done it within a year. And a lot of the areas had a pretty big increase in percentage. So I'm sure you look at it all the time, and that's the kinds of things that you increase programs or maybe phase out some that aren't as popular. But I just was really impressed with all the information. Thank you so much.
I just want to say that I attended the Library Fiction Book Club this last Thursday. That's quite a group. They have a large group that attends that. And then I also attended the Senior Book Club meeting, and they meet the second Tuesday of the month. And the next meeting they wanted me to announce was April 16th, and they changed their location. Well, the name is called Books and Brews. They changed the location to the Eagle Glen Golf Club. And so the book for this month is Twelve Months to Live, and it's a James Patterson novel, and it's a mystery. And then also, the annual Historical Fiction Authors Brunch, sold out in 10 days, and that's a record for them. I went to the meeting for the board, and so they sold out in 10 days, so that was a record for them. So we're looking forward to that. And then I also had a question about the serving with a purpose, if we had any information on that.
The last time I spoke with Robin, it seems that the Friends have purchased two tables, and there's a spot for every trustee. So the trustees have spots for that conference, and also some of the library staff were attending as well. So you're good to go.
And can I just add about the Friends? The Friends are actually going to have a booth at the Corona Norco Day of the Child event on April 20th, which is actually the same day as the author event. But they're going to be there and have a booth and hand out books to kids.
First, I would like to thank the Islamic Society of Corona Norco for inviting us to your Interfaith Annual Dinner. Unfortunately, we just got the invitations today. So I did, I'm assuming you're not watching, but in case you are, we really hope that we can go next year. But I did send you an email, so hopefully, maybe you can email us next year, because we don't get our mail timely. It's okay. And then...
I wanted to say one thing, if you don't mind. Are you finished? Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Are you sure? Is it about that?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. I would also like to, the Corona Friends, the Friends of the Library, are going to be at Corona Norco and the History Association's Road Race this Friday at Santana Park. It's third graders. I believe there's going to be about 10 schools that are going to be running around in their little box cars. So I think that is perfect. So, I think that is perfect to leads into the following week for everything that's going on in the library, because third grade is learning about the road races and stuff all throughout the school district, and the friends will be there with the table. And then, also, the Corona Chamber Foundation is having their annual Memorial Mile March on May 26th, and I think that would be great if we could collaborate with Vet Connect and see if, if we can have you guys there, or even just advertise, because it's an amazing event to honor the, our veterans. And we're really trying to change the narrative that it's a day of solemn and to remember all those that lost their lives for us, and not a day for barbecues and having a good time. So, that is all I have. So, Ayesha.
All righty, thank you. Well, this has nothing really to do with the library, but it is a city event, and that's the Circle City Corral, of which myself and Ruth are a part of. We will be having our spring concert, Music Inspires All, on May 4th at 4:00 at Santiago High School. So, I'm just putting that in your brain right now. I know it's still March, but May will be here when you blink, right? And then, I also wanted to commend our own chairperson, Jamie Merchant, for her kickoff for running for school board for District 5. So, I hope somebody out there can hear me, whoever's in District 5, and they will vote for our own chairperson, Jamie Merchant, in the November elections. It was awesome.
Thank you. When, the Tree Arbor Day, amazing. It was so fun. But now, I have a little oak tree at my house for my son, and I, we have to go find someplace to plant it, because it's not ever going to fit in our yard.
Because it will grow.
To go to the forest or something and replant it. But it was a great event, so another wonderful event from the city. So, if there's not anything else, until next month, our next meeting is April 23rd. We're adjourned.